I'd like to call the council meeting to order. Does anyone have any special intentions? Mayor Glazer?
Yes, one of the city workers in general services, Jason DeBarbres is in the hospital fighting cancer.
Anyone else? Councilmember, uh, Councilmember Shawaw?
Um, I like prayers for my son Matthew. He's in the hospital right now, uh, recovering from a staph infection from a recent surgery that he had. And also, again, I want to send my sympathies to the Megas family for their passing of Tommy Megas.
And the family of former mayor Ed Muniz. Keep them in the prayers.
Yes. Okay, Councilmember Dunn, will you lead us in prayer? Thank you, Councilmember Dunn. Uh, today we're honored to have a young lady to lead us in the pledge. Stephanie Antiguez is a fourteen-year-old young lady that is very interested in politics and government. And so she is gonna lead us in the pledge today. She's part of the Teen PAC Leadership School section. And, uh, uh, you might need to pull that mic down a little bit. And, uh, if you could lead us in the pledge, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under all, free, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Council Clerk?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum. In accordance with Council Resolution Number B-14550, please be advised that all cellular telephones and other devices of this nature must be deactivated or silenced throughout the council meeting. Next, we have correspondence reports from the mayor, CAO, or department heads.
Mayor Glazer?
Oh, okay. That's fine.
You ready for, you ready for me?
That's fine. We'll do that after.
Okay.
Doesn't matter.
Mayor? Mayor Glazer?
Me, alright. Alright, as everyone knows, today, June first is the beginning of hurricane season here in Kenner. The city of Kenner maintains a comprehensive set of plans that complement and coordinate with Jefferson Parish's procedures for emergency operations. It's important that citizens are aware of the proper steps to take during an emergency. The city's webpage contains brochures that contain important information and are designed to be printed out on a single eight-point-five-by-eleven-inch sheet of paper. It produces a color tri-fold brochure like this. The three brochures contain information on Jefferson Parish Community Alert System. It's a free service through the parish. Uh, you can sign up at jplark.com. Talks about family disaster supply kits, evacuations, bus evacuation routes, mobility impaired transportation system, business disaster plans, and business reentry plans. So that's all on our webpage. And there's a lot of, uh, helpful, uh, links. You can get to more information on responding to, uh, hurricanes in this area. And some happy news I have in the Department of Recreation. Happy to update and announce that beginning Monday, June fifth, both Buddy Lawson and Lincoln Manor Gyms will be open for basketball free play Monday through Friday from six PM to eight-thirty PM. I thought I was gonna hear a yay from you, yes, yes. I'd like to thank the Recreation Department and all the volunteers who did the work to get these two gyms open for sports. And as a reminder, Susan Park, Susan Park Gym is already open for free play Monday, Wednesday, and Friday from six PM to eight PM. And I was told after, in a couple of weeks, when baseball's complete, Musburgerlino Gym will open up also. Right now, we have just not enough, uh, employees to be at all these gyms at one time. The city's also offering this summer two free soccer clinics, two cheer camps, and a beach volleyball league for kids ages seven to twelve. Information on all these programs are found on the city's webpage. What I've learned is the beach volleyball must be very popular because we opened it up and it was full before we even announced it. Added spots, it was full before we announced it. And we added some more, and now we announce it, and I'm, I'm pretty sure it'll be full by the end of, end of the night, so. Uh, the problem with that is securing enough volunteers to coach the volleyball teams, so. If anybody wants to volunteer coaching beach volleyball, we can expand it to even more kids. And also, the Blood Center is having a Javier Adrian Flores Fajardo replacement blood drive at Kenner City Park Pavilion on Wednesday, June seventh, beginning at ten AM and ending at five PM. Adrian is a twelve-year boy that died as a result of a van crashing into his residence in Kenner. Uh, guy. That's, they do it all the time, the firemen, they want the attention. And I'd like to take this opportunity to publicly thank the police officers, firefighters, and emergency medical technicians who were at the scene. Several officers and firefighters ended up, entered the unstable structure to extricate the driver and the child. So, I know there's some concerns from at least one of you about, uh, some information on that whole incident. Caller has received that military time fifteen forty-four and five seconds. It was dispatched at fifteen forty-four and fifty-nine seconds. Fire department was on scene at fifteen forty-seven sixteen. Police were there, think right before that. Driver extricated at fifteen fifty, forty-nine seconds, and the child was extricated at fifteen fifty-seven and forty-five seconds. So with ten, within ten minutes, uh, they were both in ambulances. So that's kind of, uh, just wanted to make that, that comment because I, I did get some information that took over an hour for response, which is totally incorrect because there's a fire department right across the street, which is, which is, you know, easy, so. With that said, there's a bunch of them, and one of the firemen was your assistant council clerk's son, so. That's it.
Well, I think that since the beach volleyball has taken off the way it is, we should make it a prerequisite that they have to play basketball and baseball too, okay? That'll help our registrations. Council Clerk?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, at the request of the Police Department, uh, he is requesting, the Police Chief is requesting a one-meeting deferral on the executive session regarding Danks versus Philip Grayson at all case number two colon twenty-one dash C V dash eighteen oh six.
Got a motion by Councilmember Brannigan, second by Councilmember Brennan for a one-meeting defer. Councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Under resolutions, motions, and other items from the floor, we've received a request to amend the agenda to add item sixteen S, an ordinance ratifying the proposal for casualty package insurance for the period of July first, two thousand twenty-three through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four.
The reason that, uh, while I have, we have a motion by Councilmember Brannigan, second by Councilmember Brennan, anyone wishing to speak on this item? I just wanted to let people know that have questions about stuff coming from the floor, that we're under a time constraint and we have to have it on this council meeting in order to meet the deadlines, uh, on the next council meeting. Councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. We've also received a request to amend the agenda to add item sixteen T, an ordinance ratifying the proposal for excess workers' compensation insurance for the period of July first, two thousand twenty-three through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four.
Got a motion by Councilmember Brannigan, second by Councilmember Brennan to amend this agenda. Anyone have any questions? Councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Under the consent agenda, we have item one, approval of minutes, the regular council meeting of May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Item two is approval of alcoholic beverage permit applications. We have none. Item three is approval of bingo and public gathering applications. Item three A is application number twenty-three thirty-seven dash twenty-three, Liberty in Christ Christian Church, to hold a public gathering on June seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three, from eleven AM to five-thirty PM for the purpose of a car show and pop-up shop at Heritage Parking Lot, four hundred Williams Boulevard, Kenner, Louisiana, being the property owned by the city of Kenner. Mr. Chairman, I've received a request to remove this item from the agenda.
Have a motion by Councilmember Dunn, second by Councilmember Brannigan to remove. Councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. And that will conclude the consent agenda.
Have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, second by Councilmember McKenney. Councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Under the public appearance agenda, we have item eight, public hearings and final passage. Item nine is ordinances for the sale, purchase, transfer, lease, and/or alienation of immovable property. Item nine A is a public hearing and final passage regarding summary ordinance number thirteen thousand two hundred and six. An ordinance approving the sale of lots thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, square twenty-one, Old Kenner subdivision, Kenner, Jefferson Parish, Louisiana, which lots are owned by the city of Kenner. Mr. Chairman, we've received a request to remove this item from the agenda.
I have a motion by Councilmember Dunn, second by Councilmember Hat to remove. Councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item nine B is a public hearing and final passage regarding summary ordinance number thirteen thousand two hundred and fifty-two. An ordinance approving the lease of the building and land located on a portion of lot seventeen C, square forty, Old Kenner subdivision, bearing the municipal address of four oh nine Williams Boulevard and commonly referred to as the Observatory. Mr. Chairman, we've also received a request to remove this item from the agenda.
Have a motion by Councilmember Dunn, second by Councilmember Hat to remove. Councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item ten is opening of bids, we have none. Item eleven is reclassification of zoning for final passage. Item eleven A is a public hearing and final passage regarding summary ordinance number thirteen thousand two hundred and fifty-three. An ordinance amending ordinance number eleven thousand sixty-two, adopted by the city of Kenner, Louisiana on March seventeenth, two thousand sixteen, entitled Unified Development Code of the City of Kenner, Louisiana. More particularly, amending and rezoning lots seven through fourteen, lots nineteen through twenty-six, and lots twenty-nine through forty-two, square four sixty, highway subdivision, Kenner, Jefferson Parish, Louisiana, from RR one, single-family residential to SI Special Industrial, and directing and authorizing and empowering the planning director for the city of Kenner to alter and amend the official zoning map of the city of Kenner, which property is owned by Jefferson Wholesale LLC.
Have a motion by Councilmember Shawaw, second by Councilmember Hat to open the public hearing. Councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero.
Uh, Mr. Doof.
Yes, thank you, Council President. I do have a brief presentation. I apologize, there were some technical difficulties, so, uh, I don't have a visual presentation, but there is no development as part of this, it's strictly rezoning. Um, uh, the property owner is Mr. Kamal Zaitun, doing business at Jefferson Wholesale, twenty twenty Williams Boulevard, Kenner, Louisiana, seven zero zero six two. Uh, these lots are located in square four sixty and Highway Park, and generally bounded by Connecticut to the west, West Napoleon Avenue formerly twenty-third Street to the north, Delaware Avenue to the east, and Twenty-second Street to the south. Uh, the applicant acquired these lots from the city of New Orleans, who in turn had acquired these lots from the property owners as part of the airport buyout program. And of course, I'm sure everyone's familiar with the buyout program. Once the property was sold to the airport, uh, it became undevelopable for residential development, so. As part of his rezoning, uh, application, uh, the applicant conducted an early neighborhood meeting located at four twenty-one Williams Boulevard on April twelfth, two thousand twenty-three. Uh, he notified about thirty-nine surrounding property owners and indicated that about six surrounding property owners attended, in addition to the property owner and the District Two Councilman Ronnie Shawaw. Uh, there were no individuals that objected to the rezoning according to his report, but there were some individuals who took issue with, uh, the fencing around the property, in fact that there was, uh, a barbed wire on top of the fence. Uh, the applicant has agreed as part of, uh, his good faith to remove the barbed wire from above the fence and to place it behind the fence below the sightline. So no one will see it, but it will still be there to protect, uh, the property. Uh, he has been using the property to park cars for his car business. Uh, I believe that was a deal that was worked out, um, a couple of years ago, shortly after he acquired the property, uh, with the previous administration. Since the property could not develop residentially, he did not want to build anything. He just wanted to park cars, so he was allowed to do that. Uh, that's why it's currently being used as a, uh, car storage. So the rezoning that he is requesting is similar to other rezonings in that area. Um, there's a lot of the, a lot of the property located west of the subject lots are owned by the airport and also north. Uh, most of the property, the east, as you go towards Williams, uh, was not eligible for the buyout program or the owners elected predominantly not to participate. Uh, so, we've done several rezonings back there in order to allow property owners to actually develop, legally develop their property. And this request does fit in with those. And, uh, planning department recommended approval, as did the Planning Commission. So, that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Director Doof. Anyone else wishing to comment on this? Councilmember Shawaw?
Thank you, sir. Uh, yes, I was there at the meeting. There was concerns about the fencing, um, the razor wire, barbed wire, top of fence. That was to secure the property. Um, it did look like a prison at the time, I got to admit. And, uh, Mr. Kamal was gracious enough to say, well, he would remove it or drop it behind the fence, so it's no longer visible. I have no problem with it, and it's all in coordination with the residents. And it'll be good, good for the city.
Mr. Al Morella?
Al Morella, forty-two sixty East Royal Drive, Fifth District, fifty-one years. Uh, I'd like to address this to you, Mr. Doof. Uh, so first of all, thanks for the present presentation. But I want to ask you this because you didn't mention it. When this buyout took place, how many residents were displaced from that residential neighborhood? How many were displaced? Okay? Now, 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 second, the second thing I want to say. A couple of years ago, and I know this is a ten-year deal. It's all part of the Voting Rights Act of nineteen sixty-five. I understand all that. But we were talking about how people have been displaced out of District One with cause, the redistrict, District One took a piece of District Five. And I, I said this at this podium back then, that how many people were displaced out of District One? And now they got people in District Five, who've been in District Five for years, since they've been living back here. Now all of a sudden they're in another district, all because of this, man. So every time people are displaced, the public should know how many people was displaced. They done moved, I don't know how many people out that trailer park for this monstrosity, which I think is a disaster waiting to happen. I think the whole thing is not but a debacle. And people suffered because of this thing. People, Mark Johnson, when he was on this council, he opposed every time they tried to do something with that airport that involved displaced people in his district, he opposed it. But this time it wasn't. We just handed over. But I can tell you something right now. I did, I disagree with everything he has done concerning that monstrosity. They could have added on to the existing terminal for a lot less money, but of course, a lot of people wouldn't have been able to stem the kill, and they wouldn't have been able to line their pockets like they did off this one-point-two-billion-dollar monstrosity. So, I, this is my comments on this whole thing, man. People have been suffered down there, people have been displaced all because of this. And the whole project wasn't even necessary from the beginning. And experts say it's a disaster waiting to happen. Anybody got any comments, any questions?
Councilmember Shawaw?
Yeah, Mr. Al, this was going, God, all the way back to the Bob Livingston era. He was one of the ones that orchestrated it way back when. I, I would imagine that's twenty years now, maybe?
Hundred.
And as far as residents go, I'm gonna guess somewhere between a hundred and two hundred, maybe, that was displaced back there. And if, it wouldn't have been for his resignation, it was the buyout supposed to be all the way to Williams Boulevard. So all those residents gone out. And it was because of the, after the plank, the safety, the noise, and everything else, that's why there was the buyout and offer did buy it. And how much it was back then, I really don't know. And with the sale of the properties worth right now, now it's all owned by New Orleans.
I understand all that, Ronnie, and I thank you for your explanation on this matter. But I just want to say this again. A lot of people have been displaced. We've lost a lot of population out of District One. And not only for this, other things along the line as well, okay? And, uh, we've lost a lot of people out of that. A lot of people have been displaced. Uh, okay, anybody else? Thank you very much.
I have a motion by Councilmember Shawaw, second by Councilmember Hat to close the public hearing. Councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero.
Have a, uh, motion by Councilmember Shawaw, second by Councilmember Hat to approve. Councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item twelve is other ordinances for final passage. Item twelve A is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand two hundred and twenty-seven, an ordinance repealing Resolution B-one-seven-two-nine-three, adopted October sixth, two thousand twenty-two, and implementing requirements for the approval of the settlement of lawsuits against the city of Kenner.
Have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, second by Councilmember Brannigan. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? Councilmember Wilmot?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to open on this item. Um, this came up probably about four meetings ago or so, and we, we kept deferring it because we were trying to get a handle on it because it, it creates a new rule for the council, um, as to lawsuits and settlement thereof. So, um, initially, I came up with some legislation, uh, filed it and, and, and was somewhat uncomfortable with a couple of items in it and reworked it, retooled it, uh, with the help of the legal department. Um, and I would like to go over that, if I may, just to give everybody an idea of, of the specifics. Uh, right now, the way we function is, we have, uh, it's by resolution. Anything, any lawsuits of that nature, any settlements proposed, um, they would come to the council if it's twenty-five thousand dollars or more. That's the current law. And, and I say law, it's, it's not mandated, and that, that's what's interesting. It's, it's by resolution, so it doesn't have to be, technically, it does not have to be performed. Uh, it should be by ordinance, which is the, the case here at hand. This, this is an ordinance, so it makes it mandatory that these things be done before the council. Uh, and I'm not, not discrediting or, or saying anything negative about this current administration because I think they do a fabulous job, and, and they said that they are honoring the resolution. So that's, that's, that's a, you know, that's all good stuff. So it's not necessarily for this administration. This is for the future, and that's what laws do. We create law, and that's this body, that's what this body does. We're creating laws, we're lawmakers, so this is a part of our tasks. So with this one, what I propose, and I have an amendment, and the amendment, I'm gonna go through it. Uh, what it is, it says, anything between twenty-five thousand to five hundred thousand. It's gonna be done the same way. Um, it's not gonna change, it's gonna be by resolution. Uh, the proposal will be by resolution. Uh, then the next segment is five hundred thousand dollars or more. In that instance, it can also be done by resolution by the amendment. The original legislation, uh, says by ordinance, and, and I stand corrected on that. It should be by resolution because we don't want to have a two-week layover in the beginning and a two-week layover in, in the end. Uh, so that's to be done by resolution. So, and, and it can be, and this is a settlement figure, so it can be publicly acknowledged, the amount. Uh, and secondarily, it can be laid over by council vote only. So if it's laid over, you, you get a two-week, uh, two, two-week or one-meeting deferral. Um, and then again, that is because the council, uh, it, the council would have the vote on it not to lay it over. It would be automatic. Uh, so basically, that is the substance of the, this ordinance, and, and I ask for the support of my colleagues on this. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this legislation? Councilmember Hat?
I need, I want Legal's latest opinion on this, please, if you don't mind, Mike.
I'd just like to suggest that you introduce your amendment to get that on the floor as well because right now, the only motion is on the original form of the thing.
Correct, and I'd like to do that as well. I, I just didn't do it because it was my opening, but I'll be glad to.
But it wasn't in a form of a motion to amend?
No, it was not.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank, thank you. I actually already covered the amendment, but again, there's a couple of tweaks in it. I think it fine-tunes it, it makes it more palatable, I think, to everybody. It changes it from the word, um, uh, within, within this, the ordinance. It changes it from, from ordinance, the word ordinance, to resolution. Therefore, it does not have to lay over, uh, for two weeks in the beginning. It could be proposed and it'd be heard right away, so that would not delay. And then secondarily, it, it would be a two-meeting, uh, one-meeting deferral, two weeks, um, automatically unless the council votes to the contrary when it's five hundred thousand dollars or more. And that's basically it. So it's, it's not, if anybody has any questions, I'll be glad to try and answer them, and I'll, of course, ask Legal if they have any, uh, differences of opinion, but.
And Councilmember Brennan?
Thank you, Council Chairman. Should Legal speak first?
That's fine.
Did you ask for their?
I did.
I just wanted to get it in the right form before we proceed too much further down the line.
Yeah.
And it is now, so.
Well, we didn't adopt the amendment as of yet.
Is there any further discussion on the amendment by the council amendment? Yes. Should it, so Section two says between twenty-five and five hundred. Section three says five hundred or more. Should that be five oh one or more?
I would assume it's, if it's a penny over five hundred thousand, or is it five hundred thousand or more? So forty-nine nine ninety, uh, four ninety-nine nine ninety-nine ninety-nine would not, would be covered by Section two.
It, and if I may, Section two specifically says between twenty-five thousand and five hundred, and then Section three specifically says five hundred thousand or more. So it's covered.
Up to twenty-five thousand, the parent, the city attorney's office already has authority to settle those cases without, uh, input from the council. Uh, the, the purpose of this legislation is to, is to, um, clarify what happens over twenty-five up to a half a million, and then to change the rule as to what happens with a half a million or more. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, thank you. Yes, thank you.
So if it's 500,000, maybe I'm...
Then this, then this, this legislation would cover it, if it's 500,000 or more.
Lahat?
So the amendment was in Section 2, it used to say 25,000 and 500,000 be authorized by ordinance, and you switched it to resolution? Is that the amendment?
In Section 3, it had, instead of the word resolution on line 2, it had by ordinance.
It was originally introduced to require an ordinance, and my understanding is that the purpose that Councilmember Wilmot expressed to me was that it would have to lay over, which would give the public an opportunity to study whatever they care to study.
But, yeah, the layover wasn't intended to be on the front end, intended to be, possibly be on the back end. And by having the word ordinance in there, it would have been both back and front end.
Okay.
That's what I understand.
So it's all resolution?
Oh, my God. That sounds like a bad card.
Put us in recess, dude.
Let's take a recess, five minutes. Come out of recess and get moving on the council meeting? Council clerk?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We are back on the amendment discussion for 12A, sir.
Okay, who was speaking?
I was, I believe.
Okay.
Councilman Brennan had asked a question about the 500,000, because right now, it's on both sides. So I would suggest a Second Amendment on Section 2, changing 500,000 to 49999, because Section 3 takes care of the next dollar up. Do you follow me? It would be unusual that we get a settlement of exactly $500,000, but if we did, we wouldn't know whether it was by resolution or, in accordance with Section 2, or by resolution that lays over and states the amount as it stated in Section 3. I believe it's the intention of Councilman Wilmot that it, that it be, that it fall under Section 3. So I would suggest a Second Amendment to change in Section 2, the number 500,000, make that 49999. Do you follow me?
Yeah, I do.
Councilman Brennan, is that, was that your concern?
Yes, sir.
The intent was, is between 25,000 and 500,000, so the word between had, but if it doesn't cover, if it's your recommendation, I believe that we...
Rather than try to interpret which side it falls on, it would be clearer if we could change that number to a dollar less than 500,000.
A penny.
Sir?
A penny less is what you said.
Or a penny. Either a dollar or a penny.
Yeah, okay, or a penny less, yeah.
Absolutely, that's fine, yeah. Yeah, if it's recommended, sure, but legally, that's okay.
Okay, council clerk?
We needed to adopt the original amendment first, and then propose a Second Amendment, is that correct?
You have not voted on an amendment, so if you could just give a point of clarification, if you'd like, the council clerk can read the entire amendment into the record so everyone's on the same page. Is that okay?
Yes, please.
The amendment will revise Section 3 to read as follows, that any financial or compromise of a claim or lawsuit requiring the city of Kenner to pay 499...
No, no, that's not it. It's Section 2, if I may, that any financial settlement or compromise of a claim or lawsuit requiring Kenner to pay between 25,000 and 49999 be authorized by resolution of the council. Section 3 is not being amended.
Correct. That's correct.
Okay, I'm, I'm a little confused, because the amendment that the council clerk received was to amend Section 3 and also to add Section 4 to the legislation. And then in Section 2, we can make that amendment as well, but are we adding Section 3 and Section 4?
That amendment's already on the table, I thought.
Yeah, that's what we discussed in that.
Yeah, that, my understanding was that that amendment was already approved.
Okay, so you want to do this other amendment separate?
It doesn't matter, whichever procedural is easiest. But let's just go forward with the current amendment, and then we'll come back and change it, if we may.
Okay, so the current amendment that's on the floor will revise Section 3 to read that any financial or compromise of a claim or lawsuit requiring the city of Kenner to pay 500,000 or more be authorized by resolution of the Kenner City Council, include the total settlement amount, and not be voted on until the next regularly scheduled meeting. Also, it will add Section 4 to read as follows, that the one-meeting layover for settlements of $500,000 or more may be waived by a majority vote of the Kenner City Council. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
That was, my understanding, that was the First Amendment. The Second Amendment is to change Section 2...
Okay.
...to read 49999 rather than 500,000.
Okay, so any more discussion on the amendment as the clerk has read into the record?
Councilmember...
I do.
I, I don't mean to, I'm just completely confused at this point, and I'm going to make a motion from the floor to defer this for another meeting. I'm not comfortable with this from the floor, and trying to make certain we have it all figured out correctly.
I have a motion from Councilmember Brennan for a one-meeting deferral. Do I have a second on a one-meeting deferral?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Lahat for a one-meeting deferral. We're now on, discussion will be on a one-meeting deferral.
Any comments? Councilmember Wilmot?
I mean, if this is something that we need to do again, but it's, we've already done this, I think, three, three meetings or so, so this has been some, quite some time, and I, I would hope that we can wrap it up today, but if it's necessary and it's confusing, then I don't know what's going to change next, Tom, except maybe we can have a written Second Amendment done.
I appreciate your comments, Councilman Wilmot, but as you said, we've deferred this numerous times. I'm not comfortable, I like to read all this ahead of time and grasp it, and I'm just not comfortable with the way we're making the change. And I think if it's, if it's something that's that important, then at this point, what's another meeting? So that we do get it correctly, and we're not backpedaling at a later date. So it's not any disrespect. If it's my seniority and my age, that's fine, we can blame it on that, but that's my motion.
And I have no problem with that, then, if you, I understand his position, and he's articulated it well, thank you.
We'll prepare that Second Amendment and furnish it to the clerk and yourself before the next meeting.
Thank you.
Councilmember Shaworth?
Yeah, Councilman Wilmot, I'm with you on this, too, and also with Councilman Brennan. Let's get it all clear, if we're going to do it right, do it right one time, but I'm with you on this, just get it all settled on one piece of paper and figure out exactly where it's at, okay? I appreciate it.
Okay, so council clerk? Anyone else?
Mary Lee, I'm sorry.
And we don't have any settlements coming between now and next meeting, so it's not...
And I would ask the legal department to settle them all under 499. Okay, so, council clerk?
Yes, sir.
We have the deferral, so it's motion by Councilmember Brennan, second by Councilmember Lahat. All councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero for one-meeting deferral. Item 12B is summary ordinance number 13,259, an ordinance accepting the permitted donation of four works of art currently on loan from Henry and Pat Shane.
Have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, second by Councilmember Brannigan. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none. Councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item 13 is resolutions and motions by council members. Item 13A is a resolution authorizing a settlement in the lawsuit entitled Dank's versus Philip Grayson et al., case number 2:21-CV-1806. Mr. Chairman, we've received a request from the chief for a one-meeting deferral.
Have a motion by Councilmember Brannigan, second by Councilmember Brennan for a one-meeting deferral. Councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item 13B is a resolution expressing the full support of the city of Kenner council to join the Attorney General of Louisiana in litigation against the Federal Emergency Management Agency to challenge risk rating 2.0 citywide.
Have a motion by Councilmember McKenny, second by Councilmember Lahat. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, council, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Morella?
Al Morella, 4260 East Lord Drive, 5th District, 51 years. First of all, let me say I support this resolution, I support the council putting this resolution forward to join the Attorney General. This is also in conjunction with the National Flood Insurance Program with these cars traffic increases in flood insurance. Now, I want to say this, a few years back, the National Flood Insurance Program, they tried to pull the same thing. They was talking about possibly running everybody out of Grand Isle at the time. They was talking about implementing $20,000 a year flood insurance premiums on the people in this state, in this area in particular. We fought it at the Jefferson Parish Council, myself and a few other people, and we got them to back off. And instead, what they did, they proposed an 18% increase over a three or four-year period, which was discussed in our council chamber at that time. So we got them to back off of that idea. But I told everybody, they're going to come back, and they're going to keep coming back. But while they were doing this, okay, what they wasn't saying, and this was brought out in the news, it was in the Advocate, a while, about a few weeks later. The National Flood Insurance Program, first of all, is an illegal monopoly. It's the largest monopoly in the country. Evidently, they don't know anything about the Sherman Antitrust Act. Nobody up there in Washington DC either, okay? So let me just say this, that we found out, it was uncovered, that the National Flood Insurance Program was paying big bucks to second and third parties to handle people's flood insurance, who they thought the National Flood Insurance Program was handling their premiums when they sent in their payments. But no, and it kept us quiet for a long time, but it leaked out. And they was paying these people some big bucks, at the same time crying the blues, and trying to rip off the people in this area and close down the entire community. Anybody got any comments, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morella. Anyone else? Councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item 14 is items removed from the consent agenda, we have none. Item 15 is acceptance of contracts and similar matters approved by the mayor. Item 15A is summary ordinance number 13,254, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Beacon Air Conditioning Heating and Refrigeration Incorporated to furnish and install a three-ton air conditioning and heating system at the Hispanic Resource Center, 4312 Florida Avenue, Kenner, in accordance with letter bid 23-2073, and the amount of $9,200 for the Department of General Services.
Have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, second by Councilmember McKenny. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none. Councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item 15B is summary ordinance number 13,255, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from DOM Development Corporation to provide carpentry services, labor only, for post-hurricane restoration in accordance with... with sealed bid twenty-three dash sixty-seven sixty in an amount not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars for the Department of General Services.
Have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, second by Councilmember Shaworth. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? The only question that I have, Mr. Glorioso, is you, we had talked about this item before and it's splitting some things up, either regular maintenance or IDA-related, can you talk about that for a second so everyone understands?
Well, the main reason we're doing this is because FEMA requires us to have a separate emergency contract in place for hurricane damage, so we can separate the two from regular repair maintenance and repairs and modifications to buildings or hurricane damage. So we have one in place, this is a brand-new contract, we never had one of these before. It's emergency and it's a labor-only contract.
Okay, so basically it's for, to, to separate things, to keep it clean.
Yes, separate the two from day-to-day repairs to hurricane-related issues.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions? Council members in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen B is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand two hundred and fifty-five. An ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from DOM Development Corporation to provide carpentry, did I just do this one? Sorry, y'all, sorry. Item fifteen C is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand two hundred and fifty-six. An ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Gil's Carpet Sales Incorporated to furnish and install LVT flooring at Lan, at the Lan Yap Theater in Rivertown in accordance with letter bid twenty-three dash twenty-sixty-eight in the amount of twelve thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars for the Department of General Services.
Got a motion by Councilmember Dunn, second by Councilmember McKenney. Anyone want to speak on this? Seeing none, council members in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen D is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand two hundred and fifty-seven. An ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from MRP Contractors LLC to supply roofing materials for Moss Bertolino locker room roof in accordance with letter bid twenty-three dash twenty-sixty-seven in the amount of eight thousand seven hundred and forty dollars and ninety-eight cents for the Department of General Services.
Have a motion by Councilmember Branigan, second by Councilmember McKenney. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, council members in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen D is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand two hundred and fifty-seven. An ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from MRP Contractors LLC to supply roofing materials.
Nope.
Nope.
Sorry, y'all.
That's a game tonight.
I am off tonight, I am so sorry.
You're in the wrong chair.
That's what we did, that's right. Item fifteen E is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand two hundred and fifty-eight. An ordinance approving the second addendum to the video services agreement extending the franchise of DirecTV LLC.
Got a motion by Councilmember Lahat, second by Councilmember Shaworth. Anyone wishing to speak on this? Seeing none, council members in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen F is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand two hundred and sixty. An ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Christmas Village LLC to repair various LED Christmas figures in accordance with sealed bid number twenty-three dash sixty-seven fifty-eight in the amount of thirty thousand two, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars for the Department of Public Works.
Got a motion by Councilmember Dunn, second by Councilmember McKenney. Anyone wishing to speak on this? Seeing none, council members in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen G is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand two hundred and sixty-one. An ordinance approving an agreement with the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development DOTD, state project number H period zero one five 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 four, federal aid project number H zero one five 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 four regarding Leola Drive resurfacing from Thirty-first Street to West Leola Drive, City of Kenner project.
Got a motion by Councilmember Wilmont, second by Councilmember McKenney. Anyone wish, Councilmember Wilmont? Thank you, Mr. President. I, I wanted to ask, just in general, I know this is a federal, federal aid pro, project, so if we can, could you possibly, Mr. Gonzalez, tell us the, the amounts?
The estimated construction cost of this project along with the necessary inspection for this particular project is about two point, two point seven million at this point in time.
And, and, and how much is?
Eighty percent will be federal money, twenty percent will be local money. Now, the city is gonna have to absorb the design-related fees on a hundred percent basis.
Is, is, is that the same, this is fifteen G, is that the same for the next two?
For, the same for the next two, except that the construction cost is gonna vary from project to project.
Right, but it's eighty, twenty match?
Eighty, twenty for all construction-related work.
Thank you, thank you, that's all. Council members in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen H is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand two hundred and sixty-two. An ordinance approving an agreement with the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development DOTD, state project number H period zero one five five six one, federal aid project number H zero one five five six one regarding Vintage Drive eastbound resurfacing from Duncan Canal to Power Boulevard, City of Kenner project.
Got a motion by Councilmember Wilmont, second by Councilmember McKenney. Anyone wishing to speak on this? Seeing none, council members in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen I is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand two hundred and sixty-three. An ordinance approving an agreement with the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development DOTD, state project number H period zero one five five six two, federal aid project number H zero one five five six two regarding Veterans Boulevard resurfacing from Williams Boulevard, LA forty-nine to Roosevelt Boulevard, City of Kenner project.
Got a motion by Councilmember Shaworth, second by Councilmember Wilmont. Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none, council members in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen J is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand two hundred and sixty-four. An ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Han Enterprises Incorporated to furnish and install backstop padding at the Lattice Playground in accordance with letter bid number twenty-three dash twenty-seventy in the amount of five thousand two hundred and ninety-five dollars for the Department of Parks and Recreation.
Got a motion by Councilmember Lahat, second by Councilmember McKenney. Anyone wishing to speak on this? Seeing none, council members in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen K is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand two hundred and sixty-five. An ordinance ratifying the emergency replacement of pump number two rotating assembly at Duke and Trinity Lift Station by Delta Process Equipment in the amount of five thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars for the Department of Waste Water.
Got a motion by Councilmember Dunn, second by Councilmember Brennan. Any comments on this item? Seeing none, council members in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen L is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand two hundred and sixty-six. An ordinance ratifying the emergency repair of pump number two at West Oglethorpe Lift Station by Fluid Processing Pumps LLC in the amount of seven thousand three hundred and thirty dollars for the Department of Waste Water.
Got a motion by Councilmember Brennan, second by Councilmember Wilmont. Any comment? Seeing none, council members in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen M is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand two hundred and sixty-seven. An ordinance ratifying the emergency repair of pump number three at West Oglethorpe Lift Station by Fluid Processing Pumps LLC in the amount of fifteen thousand three hundred and eighty-eight dollars for the Department of Waste Water.
Got a motion by Councilmember Brennan, second by Councilmember Wilmont. Anyone wanting to speak? Seeing none, council members in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen N is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand two hundred and sixty-eight. An ordinance amend, approving an engineering agreement with MSMM Engineering LLC to provide professional engineering services associated with the St. Jude Sewer Lift Station upgrades project in an amount not to exceed sixty-eight thousand dollars for the Department of Waste Water.
Got a motion by Councilmember McKenney, second by Councilmember Brennan. Anyone wishing to speak? Council members in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen O is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand two hundred and sixty-nine. An ordinance ratifying the emergency repair of pump number three at West Stanford Lift Station by Fluid Processing Pumps LLC in the amount of fourteen thousand three hundred and twenty dollars for the Department of Waste Water.
Got a motion by Councilmember Brennan, second by Councilmember Shaworth. Any comments? Council members in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen P is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand two hundred and seventy. An ordinance authorizing the filing of a pre-application, full application, and issued debt in the amount of four million dollars to the Louisiana Department of Environmental Quality, LDEQ, for the purpose of placing the city of Kenner on a priority list for funding through the Clean Water State Revolving Fund Loan Program for the Department of Waste Water.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lahat, second by Councilmember Shaworth. Councilmember Wilmont? Mr. Gonzalez, if you could, just explain this one.
I'm gonna let Joanne explain it.
Okay.
Back in, look, back in February, there was an ordinance that was adopted, ordinance number twelve thousand one sixty-eight. And all we're doing is with this is including the estimated cost of the three lift stations that we wanna rehab or construct. So all we're doing is adding a dollar amount, which is four million dollars associated with those three lift stations.
Okay, and, and you, you're spent on it?
Yes, the, the application was sent to the DEQ. Once they reviewed the, the pre-application, they requested that another ordinance be passed showing the amount of what we were asking when we, for the loan application. So they wanted that and they wanted the list of projects. So it's three lift stations, it's Twenty-Fifth and Helena Lift Station, Twenty-Fifth and Salem Lift Station, and Jackson Street Lift Station. So Twenty-Fifth and Helena, Twenty-Fifth and Salem are gonna be new stations relocated. Right now, they're on the canal bank between two streets that you can't really get to the station, it's hard to take care of, they're gonna move them, and then Jackson Street will be upgraded, and that's in front of Pelican.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? Mr. Morella?
Al Morella, forty-two sixty, East Leola Drive, fifth district, fifty-one years. This loan application, Joanne, we, we are sending in the application, we gotta make a loan for this way?
Yes.
Once again, I'm gonna keep handling it home and that, you can believe it, I changed y'all, I mean, that, uh, public records request is coming. But once again, I'm gonna bring up that eighty million dollars nine years ago, eighty million dollars in bond debt, now we borrowing money, we sending in applications to borrow money for work that was supposed to be done over the years, and the mayor was right when he came in here, our sewer system is no, no further along now than it was nine years ago, but where's the eighty million dollars? Where is it? We gonna find out, count on that. Anybody got any comments, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morella. Anyone else? Council members in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilmont? Ms. Herring, how is this built into our budget?
So this is just a loan application, we don't know what we're gonna get, and there is, I think this is the one, there's a possibility of loan forgiveness. So we don't know, this is just preliminary application. Once, if it is approved and it's not forgiven, the city will have to decide if we wanna move forward with the loan, more, move forward with those projects, and, and then it would be budgeted in the future. So at this point, it's all preliminary, we're not sure if we're gonna get approval or there is a chance for a hundred percent forgiveness.
And it just gives us options for the future?
Correct.
With serious issues?
Yeah, and I mean, we should go after these type of programs, even if it's, if it comes back and we decide we don't want it, it's a good opportunity for a grant.
Thank you.
And the only thing I wanna add to that, that the information that Mr. Al is looking for, we've been having that information for some time now, if he files a public records request, we'll be glad to give it to him.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Council members in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen Q is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand two hundred and seventy-one. An ordinance ratifying the emergency purchase of a two-hundred-and-fifty HP blower motor for the wastewater treatment plant by Precision PSI LLC in the amount of twenty-two thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars for the Department of Waste Water.
Got a motion by Councilmember Lahat, second by Councilmember Wilmont. Any comments on this? Council members in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen R is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand two hundred and seventy-two. An ordinance ratifying the emergency repair of pump number one at Thirty-third and Connecticut Lift Station by Precision PSI LLC in the amount of thirty-six thousand two hundred and twenty dollars and twenty-two cents for the Department of Waste Water.
Got a motion by Councilmember Shaworth, second by Councilmember Lahat. Any comments on this? Seeing none, council members in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen S is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand two hundred and seventy-three. An ordinance ratifying the emergency repair of blower number one, two-hundred-and-fifty HP motor for the wastewater treatment north plant by Precision PSI LLC in the amount of seventeen thousand five hundred and eighty-three dollars and seventy cents for the Department of Waste Water.
Got a motion by Councilmember Dunn, second by Councilmember Wilmont. Any comments? Council members in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen T is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand two hundred and seventy-four. An ordinance ratifying the emergency repair of the conveyor system in the belt press building of the wastewater treatment plant by Serpentine X Conveyor Corp. in the amount of ten thousand six hundred and twenty dollars for the Department of Waste Water.
Got a motion by Councilmember Shaworth, second by Councilmember Wilmont. Any comments? Council members in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen U is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand two hundred and seventy-five. An ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Fluid Processing Pumps LLC to purchase two pump motors for sewer lift station at Kenner City Park in accordance with letter bid number twenty-three dash twenty-sixty-nine in the amount of sixteen thousand six hundred and fifty dollars for the Department of Public Works.
Got a motion by Councilmember Brennan, second by Councilmember Wilmont. Any comments? Council members in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen V is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand two hundred and seventy-six. An ordinance approving amendment number one to the agreement with Moon's Towing Service Incorporated for hauled waste to increase the agreement amount to four hundred thousand dollars annually.
Have a motion by Councilmember Dunn, second by Councilmember Shaworth. Any comments? Council members in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen W is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand two hundred and seventy-seven. An ordinance approving the health insurance policy and rates for health insurance coverage for the city of Kenner employees, retirees, dependents for the fiscal year July first two thousand twenty-three through June thirtieth two thousand twenty-four with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Louisiana.
Got a motion by Councilmember Brennan, second by Councilmember Branigan. Any comments? Councilmem, uh, Councilmember McKenney?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I just wanna, I know in our budget hearings, we discussed the increases. If you can just touch on the increases and how, I think it's important to note that the increases in health insurance are being absorbed by the city of Kenner and not passed along and that, you know, so if you could talk, comment on that.
Mary Laza?
You got it. Blue Claw, Blue Cross Blue Shield, we've been having for several years, had no increase through the years. It came back this past, this current year at nineteen percent. So I know Mr. Empistado tried to negotiate it down for us, got it down to fifteen percent. I wasn't happy with the fifteen percent increase, so we RFP'd it, went out to find other companies to provide us health insurance. Nobody wanted to bid with, with the, you know, our, our history, so we are stuck with the fifteen percent. It's the lowest we could've got. It's gonna, it's a one, whatever, it's a one point, whatever the increase is, we're not passing on to employees. The employee rate will stay the same with they contribute to, and the city will pick up the difference. Because a fifteen percent increase in one thing and a two percent raise doesn't, doesn't work out for the employee, so.
Thank you, Mayor. Anyone else? Council members in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen X is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand two hundred and seventy-eight, an ordinance approving an agreement with Sears Environmental Services Incorporated to provide post-disaster debris collection, processing, and disposal services in accordance with RFP number twenty-three dash sixty-seven forty-two.
Got a motion by Councilmember McKenney, second by Councilmember Dunn. Any comments? Councilmembers in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen Y is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand two hundred and seventy-nine, an ordinance authorizing an agreement with Tetra Tech Incorporated to provide post-disaster debris management and monitoring services in accordance with RFP twenty-three dash sixty-seven forty-three.
Got a motion by Councilmember McKenney, second by Councilmember Dunn. Any comments? Councilmember McKenney?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Um, I just wanted to, um, ask, is Tetra Tech the same, um, the same debris manager and monitor that we had previously, or is that a new contractor?
It's a new vendor that won the RFP.
Okay, thank you.
That I hope we never use.
Ditto. Councilmembers in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay.
Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item sixteen is ordinances and resolutions in summary for first reading. Item sixteen A is an ordinance accepting the lowest response bid received from VATCO Construction and Maintenance Incorporated to furnish and install three automatic gates at City Hall, Building D, sixteen-ten Reverend Richard Wilson Drive, Kenner, Louisiana, in accordance with SEAL bid number twenty-three dash sixty-seven sixty-one in the amount of thirty-seven thousand five hundred and seventy-two dollars for the Department of General Services. Item sixteen B is an ordinance accepting the lowest response bid received from Safety Zone Holdings Incorporated, doing business as Safety Zone Specialist to purchase deline, delineators and accessories in accordance with letter bid twenty-three dash twenty-seventy-four in the amount of eight thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars and fifty cents for the Department of General Services. Item sixteen C is an ordinance accepting the lowest response bid received from Romelli Janitorial Service Incorporated to provide grass cutting of rough cut areas, ditch slopes, in accordance with SEAL bid number twenty-three dash sixty-seven sixty-four in an amount not to exceed fifty-five thousand dollars annually for the Department of Field Services. Item sixteen D is an ordinance accepting the lowest response bid received from Pavement Markings LLC to furnish and install and remove thermoplastic pavement markings in accordance with SEAL bid number twenty-three dash sixty-seven sixty-six in an amount not to exceed two-hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually for the Department of Field Services. Item sixteen E is an ordinance accepting the lowest response bid to purchase stand pipe kits and accessories in accordance with letter bid twenty-three dash sixty-seven sixty-seven for the city of Kenner Fire Department. Item sixteen F is an ordinance approving amendment number nine to the agreement with ASM Global, formerly known as SMG, for management services for the Ponchatrain Convention and Civic Center to extend the agreement through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Item sixteen G is an ordinance accepting the lowest response bid received from Han Enterprises Incorporated to furnish and install outdoor fitness equipment at Kenner City Park in accordance with SEAL bid twenty-three dash sixty-seven fifty-seven in the amount of sixty-six thousand three hundred and eighty-one dollars for the Department of General Services. Item sixteen H is an ordinance accepting the lowest response bid received from Tran Tex Transportation Products of Texas Incorporated to supply signed poles and miscellaneous supplies as needed in accordance with SEAL bid twenty-three dash sixty-seven sixty-five in an amount not to exceed forty thousand dollars annually for the Department of General Services. Item sixteen I is an ordinance approving the group life insurance and AD&amp;D coverage for the city of Kenner employees, retirees, dependents for the fiscal year July first two thousand twenty-three through June thirtieth two thousand twenty-four with the Standard Insurance Company. Item sixteen J is an ordinance approving amendment number six to the agreement with Ra, RaMann and Associates Incorporated to add additional work and funds. Item sixteen K is an ordinance ratifying the emergency replacement of the Ashbrook Belt Press Drive Roller by GSM Engineered Fabrics LLC in the amount of twelve thousand four hundred and eighty dollars for the Department of Waste Water. Item sixteen L is an ordinance approving a nice gold package renewal service agreement with Motorola Solutions in the amount of nineteen thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars for the Kenner Police Department. Item sixteen M is an ordinance authorizing acceptance of a private donation for the purchase of a new exhibit from High Project Group Incorporated, a sole source provider for the Rivertown Science Center. Item sixteen N is an ordinance accepting the lowest response bid received from Monarch Trophy Studio to supply sports awards in accordance with letter bid number twenty-three dash twenty-seventy-nine in the amount of twenty thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and five cents for the Department of Parks and Recreation. Item sixteen O is an ordinance authorizing utilization of existing state contract number four-four-zero-zero-zero-one-nine-seven-four-zero with the Han Company to purchase office furniture and other related items through the Louisiana Office Products on an as-needed basis not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars annually for the Department of Finance. Item sixteen P is an ordinance authorizing the lease purchase agreement with PNC Equipment Finance LLC for one Pierce Enforcer Heavy Duty Rescue Pumper for the Kenner Fire Department. Item sixteen Q is an ordinance approving a purchase of one heavy-duty rescue pumper from Sidens Martin Emergency Group LLC in accordance with Louisiana LA MAS Contract Number four-four-zero-zero-zero-one-seven-seven-four-one for the city of Kenner Fire Department. Item sixteen R is an ordinance prohibiting cell phones, cameras, or other devices capable of recording audio or video in the mayor's court building. Item sixteen S is an ordinance ratifying the proposal for casualty package insurance for the period of July first two thousand twenty-three through June thirtieth two thousand twenty-four. Item sixteen T is an ordinance ratifying the proposal for excess workers' compensation insurance for the period of July first two thousand twenty-three through June thirtieth two thousand twenty-four. Item seventeen is reports from the council and our special committees.
Uh, Ms. Newton, did you wanna?
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Branigan. Um, yes, I understand at the last meeting, there was, um, some questions regarding the city's, uh, communication methods, and so I wanted to address that. Just to provide some clarity, I'm sure that the public has noticed a little bit of difference in style between this administration and the last administration. So the first thing that I want to address is, um, ribbon cuttings. Um, we rely on the business owners to reach out to us for ribbon cuttings. We, when we are notified of a new business, we send them a letter, we encourage them to reset, reach out to business organizations, uh, the Chamber, Hispanic Chamber, Kenner Business Association, JEDCO, and let them work with those agencies, um, to promote their business. If they reach out and invite us, then, um, we usually attend and try to promote that through some of our social media channels. We are working on some communication so that they will better understand all of the elected officials in Kenner and reaching out to all of the elected officials in Kenner, um, for those instances. Um, just, we're of the opinion that we're already short-staffed, we do not need to be sending our city employees out to set up for ribbon cuttings. Um, they have better things to do with their time, although we are very supportive of our businesses and here for them if they need us. Every flyer that we have for any event is posted to KTV. We do a weekly This Weekend in Kenner post for our social media platforms and KTV, but I would really encourage the public to utilize our new website. Social media should not be your go-to for information. If we have information that we need to get out to the public, we're trying to put it in an, now that we have a resource that is easily, easy to navigate, we try to make that accessible to everyone, and not everyone has social media. So we're trying to do a better job of upkeep with the calendar, but again, every event that you might see the mayor or an elected official at might not be a public event, and we're not gonna advertise it to the public. It could be a private business event that we've been invited to and are utilizing it to maybe help promote them in the city. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to address them. I think, I think that covers it, but I really would like to, and, and anything that is available to the public, or any events for the public, we send that out to the news outlets, and we do rely on them to try to push that out to the public via other methods, like TV and, and print and digital media. But that's all I got.
Okay, Ms. Newton, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Brennan?
Thank you, Councilmember Branigan. Ms. Newton, thank you for that information. I think your point of the time, certainly, everybody in this room is pro-business, and we want as much business in the city of Kenner as we could possibly have. Your point of the number of people that have to go out to set up and, and takes, take items down, um, there was a comment, since you said it about Facebook, asking why Memorial Day was not the, the celebration at the park, why it was not Monday, and why it was last Friday? And someone made the comment of, how many employees would it take, and what would the overtime cost me for people to be there? I reached out to Ms. Herring just as a ballpark and said, wha, what are we looking at for that to be done? And it, it's, it's in excess of twenty-five hundred dollars just for fifteen employees that she kinda, I think randomly grabbed. That may not seem a lot, but if it's, if it's overtime and it's, it's all these activities, and then again, back to the ribbon cuttings and setting up the big tents and all of that, it's many people and it's many hours, and over the course of a year, many, many dollars that could be spent, obviously, on, on better things. So thank you for that clarification, and thank you for allowing me to speak, Council Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Brennan. Anyone else? Council Clerk?
Item eighteen. It's new business, we have none. Item nineteen is items to be reconsidered or removed from a table position, we have none. Item twenty is persons wishing to address the council on special subject matters.
Uh, Mr. Al Morella?
Al Morella, forty-two sixty East Royal Drive, fifty, district fifty-one years. I wanna start out, Memorial Day ceremony was a big success. Uh, everyone involved, I wanna thank you and express my deepest appreciation for a job well done. That's number one. Now, the next item, uh, I wanna refer to an article in The Advocate on May twenty-fourth concerning our budget. Now, we have a hundred and eighteen million dollar budget, uh, two million dollars, uh, less than it was last year, that's okay, but the problem is, according to that article, we gotta dip into our general fund to fund that budget. Now, I believe this is the result of two things. Now, bear in mind, this administration did come in here, and he did cut some of his waste, but for a long, long time, and it still exists today on a local level, state level, and national level, okay? Two things, the political payback and the favors being called in by the political establishment to bring their friends in here and give them high-paying jobs for a position we never had before. So this is the result of all of this, and it's still going on today. Look at it up there in Washington DC right now, okay? We taken five and a half trillion dollars last year, we spent six and a half trillion. Now we gotta keep raising the debt. There's only one president, I'm gonna object to a little history in this now, there's only one president in the history of this country that paid off the national debt, and that was the seventh president of this country, Andrew Jackson. And the forty-second president, Bill Clinton, balanced the budget, and that was the end of all of that. The national debt has been spiraling out of control ever since then. Now, I wanna, third thing on the agenda. I issued my public records request to Jose Gonzalez, and he gave me the one-page information on the twenty-thirty plan. The twenty-thirty plan consisted of ten projects at a tune of thirty-seven million dollars in bond debt nine years ago. Six of those ten projects, some of them have been completed, some of them are still going on, some of them were stalled in the previous administration for whatever reason, okay? Four of them now is in conflict with the DOT, the DOTD, okay? So some of them may not even happen. Total mount spent so far, okay, is thirty-five million, six hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars and eight cents. With four projects, three of them may never happen now. So nine years ago, when this, when we were putting this debt, why in the world, you mean to tell me the people who negotiated this didn't know that anything that involves Williams Boulevard is DOTDD, DOTD? That's a state highway! So look at us now. So I just wanted to pass this off to the public and the viewers who view, who tuned in there. Anybody got any comments and any questions? I know, I know you're looking at, but I wanna say this to you, Councilman Branigan, I got a few seconds left?
I'll give you two seconds.
Okay. I know you're familiar with the song, "Time is on my side," originally recorded, recorded by owner Ernest Thomas in sixty-five, and re-recorded by Rolling Stone in sixty-six. So you were council chairman, and I tell them the same thing at Jefferson Parish, "Time is on my side." Thank you.
Mr. Morella, I have, you made a comment about the budget and the general fund, and I think that you need to look at the budget from the prior year, because in actual numbers, the, the, the fiscal responsibility that this administration is doing by looking at that budget in a twelve-month, twelve months at a time. When you look at what the general fund was supposed to be hit last year, it was like four-point-six million dollars, and we ended up this year putting three million back, so that's a seven-point-six million dollars fiscally responsible swing.
Right.
In the right direction.
And I mentioned that, Councilman Branigan, but the fact of the matter is, the article says we still gotta dip into the general fund to, to fund this, uh, to fund this budget. Thank you.
Ms. Deborah Edwards?
Good evening, Council, Mayor, Chief of Police Connolly. Uh, I am standing.
Can you state your address?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Deborah, I'm Deborah Houston Edwards, twenty-five, twenty-five, Sixth Street, and we're in Ministry at twenty-one fifty Reverend Richard Wilson Drive. I stand before you representing the supporters of Washington Elementary STEM School. Uh, we are a five-oh-one-C-three nonprofit organization organized in twenty-nineteen to support Washington and to accomplish the purpose of supporting the school, the facility, the faculty, the staff, the students, the parents, et cetera. So I'm standing here with some requests. We are at a, at a, I don't even know how to describe what we're in the midst of, but I know that we have had and look forward to continuing to have the support of the Kenner City Council as well as, um, our new mayor and the new council. We are requesting that you stand with us, uh, before the Jefferson Parish School District and the Jefferson Parish School Board to place a moratorium on any action planned related to Washington Elementary School until the State of Louisiana's Division of Historic Preservation and the United States National Registry of Historic, uh, Places issues the determination as a historical landmark. We have started that process on, and are working through that process and are, and applying for a grant to facilitate that process. The next thing, we stand, we are asking that you, in, well, in, in twenty, uh, nineteen, the end of twenty-nineteen, February of twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty, you passed, you approved a resolution, uh, recognizing the historical and educational importance of Washington Elementary STEM School, uh, Washington Elementary School in the city of Kenner. And we're asking that you stand with us again as we pursue that particular, uh, concern. Uh, and we also understand that there have been some meetings that have been taking place with, uh, I'm not sure if it's with, uh, Mayor Glazer or who, um, um, about utilizing the facility as maybe a shooting range or as a place to train, uh, the, the police cadets. That area is a residential area for a school, uh, it is inclusive of a school to be there. And so we're asking that you put us at the table, let us come to the table with you as we, as we look forward to ways of incorporating, uh, Washington Elementary School into the city of Kenner. We need to be at the table, we are the voices of South Kenner, North Kenner, and all of Kenner, uh, basically, because what impacts, one area impacts us all. So we're asking for you to really, really think about it and, and to come up with some legislation. legislation among, for, for the city of Kenner, to make sure that we have that, that designation first from the city of Kenner. We have the resolution, but we'd like it to go a little bit further, and also from the, from the, the state and from the federal government.
Ms. Edwards?
Yes.
I hate to stop you, but your three minutes is up.
May I have a little extension as you gave Mr. Morella, please?
I'll give you two seconds like I gave him, that he used more than two seconds.
In, in, in conclusion, we just ask for your support. Okay, I have, I also have written my name down twice, because I'm also representing another organization, Rejoice Incorporated. May I have the three minutes for Rejoice? I did write my name down twice.
Council Clerk? How does that work? Never had this question before. If she signed up twice under two different addresses, I mean, it's three minutes, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm sorry. You can come back to the next meeting and-
No, not, no, because the event is coming up, and I wanted you to, this was an invitation. This is a good, a good, a, a good gesture for the community.
Thirty seconds.
Rejoice Incorporated, the nonprofit organization that's, that is operating through New Bertha Three Zero La Gloria Ministries, is having our seventh annual Juneteenth Fellowship. It's going to be a fun experience, it's not going to be outside, it's going to be an evening of entertainment, and we couldn't announce it earlier because Buddy Lawson had not been advertised as being open. So now we're advertised, we, we would like to invite the council as well as the, the mayor and all of the administration to come and fellowship with us from six to ten at Buddy Lawson on June seventeenth, from six to ten, food, fellowship, friendship, just come and just understand what Juneteenth is about and who we are in the community, and I think you would really enjoy the evening. That's it.
Okay, thank you very much. Dr. Robert Davidson? Please state your name and address, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Dr. Robert Dawson.
Dawson.
Tom Wilmot knows my name. He's a fellow Bonneville alumni. I'm a charter nineteen-seventy-three class graduate, this is our fiftieth anniversary. I want, I'm standing here, I rise to support Washington Elementary as an educational resource center. Can you envision that being the case? George Stevens Washington, a journalist and activist educator who was, the school is so named after, a resource center with the possibilities of a child development, education, teen and adolescent health, discipline and wellness, leadership, development, senior services, social services, entrepreneurship, a gathering place, a museum, a library, and a South Kenner social venue. It is our utmost request that you stop, you establish a moratorium on the God-forbidden proposed demolition of Washington. Many of those buildings on the campus are historic, nineteen thirty-two, nineteen fifty-two, nineteen sixty-eight, nineteen seventy. We can't let our history go down in demolition. It bothers me. And I just want to say, Chief Connolly, that what we've heard bothers us about a shooting range in a residential area. That land was purchased by community residents, we would like for it to continue to be a community center, a community education center, and not only is it designated preliminarily by the state as a national historic site, but again, we're in the process for the national historic designation with the National Park Service, and we have service, we have support on the state and the federal level. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Maria DeFrances? Please state your name, address, you have three minutes.
Thank you, thank you. My name is Maria DeFrances, I live at twenty Monte Carlo Drive. I have a slight frog in my throat, so please just forgive me if it's difficult to understand. I felt it was imperative to come here tonight to commend and thank our police department. We have a very safe city, but unfortunately, not long ago, we had a horrendous murder in the city of Kenner, a senseless murder, and I happen to know the gentleman that was killed. He was a wonderful person, he was kind, he, he didn't know black, white, purple, or green. He helped everybody, and, and never asked very much in return. In fact, we used to try, he was a handyman. We used to try to pay him minimum wage, he wouldn't even accept that much. That's the kind of person he was. He helped black churches, he helped white churches, he helped people in his neighborhood. He didn't care who you were, he was always there for people. And he was killed fixing a mailbox with his back to the street, a senseless horrendous murder by people that had no souls, that evidently had lost their humanity. They had gone up that morning and decided they wanted to kill somebody, and he happened to be the first person they saw. Our police department was on the scene immediately. How do I know that? The lady next door called me because she knew I knew him. My husband and I raced out there. By the time we got there, and we weren't that far away, the police had cordoned off the whole area, there were so many different officers and detectives out there, and they were professional, completely professional in the way they handled it. They handled everything quickly, and they made sure no one interfered. We stayed back, but you could see the way they ha, they actually, actually worked the scene, the way they handled themselves. I was impressed. I've known our police officers for so long, and I was impressed with the way they handled themselves, not only professionally, but also with compassion, and you could tell they felt for the person that had been killed. Later on, when I went back and the scene was clear, there was still another detective there and one police car with two officers, and we talked for a while. And again, their humanity, the humanity of those officers and that detective came through, they cared, and they were going to make sure that, that poor Peanut, because that was his net name, and everybody knew him that way, that he would get justice, and they did. Our police department immediately got on, on task, and they were able, in a very short period of time, to find the perpetrators of that horrendous crime. And not only by finding them so quickly did they bring justice to Peanut, but who knows how many lives they saved? Those were people that were looking to hurt others, and our police department, with their quick action, I feel in my heart, stopped who knows how many other people from getting killed. So I want to commend our police officers, every single one of them. They did a fabulous job, every detective, every officer on the street, and Chief Connolly, you were wonderful. Let me thank you for the way you handled this, the entire process, the way you reached out to the family of Peanut and his mother, she's ninety years old, and I just wanted to say that they cared, but they also are professionals and the best police department that I know of, and thank you for letting me say this.
Thank you, Mr. Frances. Council Clerk?
That would be it, sir.
Councilmember Wilmot?
And I would just like to thank former councilwoman Maria DeFrances for stopping by and delivering her message, and we appreciate you. Thank you.
George? Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Brannigan, second by Councilmember Wilmot, to adjourn.[1788.66][1788.66]